All right, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty and we'll call this morning's meeting to order. We do have two agenda additions. A request for approval to work with Michael J. Burns Architects, and this is on the West Central Juvenile Center, and a request to hire a full-time security detention counselor due to resignation.
Move to approve with the additions?
Motion is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same sign. Motion carried. Excuse my sniffles here. Decisions to be heard. Do we have any decisions to be heard today on an item that's not on the agenda? Any decisions to be heard on item not on the agenda? Okay. Hold on. Approval of bills and vouchers. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same sign. Motion carried. Our eight thirty-five item is the performance evaluation system address changes to that. Darren, good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I get to go first today. That's like, I'm not ready for that. All right. Well, as you see in your packet there, I gave a little summary of what we're requesting today. A little bit of history behind this. About a year, a little over a year ago, I was looking at the performance evaluation system, trying to see if we could come up with something a little bit better. And about that same time, my, actually, my sister-in-law was doing her thesis for her master's degree in human resources, and they, and she wanted to do a, not only a thesis on performance evaluations and personnel management, but, so they came, she came in and we did some focus groups with some supervisors, employees, and managers, department heads, on what makes a good performance evaluation system, and also what they liked and disliked about our performance evaluation system. And so, from that, we put together a committee of supervisors, employees, and department heads to take a look at our system. And as part of that, we distributed a survey to the county on what they liked and disliked about the performance evaluation system, and we got about one hundred and fifty results back from that, which is pretty good. And some of the themes that we saw through that was timeliness. People weren't getting their evaluations on time, and especially if they were due a step, because we were holding steps until we got the evaluation. Saying the same thing over and over every year, because we do annual evaluation. Somebody that's been here twenty years doing the same job, it's kind of hard to come up with something new every time. There was no real incentive for people that were doing an excellent job compared to people that weren't doing, or were just doing their job. There was no incentive program. It was just, those people got steps once they hit their year mark. And then relevancy through the, to the job itself, you know, it didn't always, wasn't always relevant to the job that they're doing. So what we did is we formed this committee, and we met about six times to look at our whole process. During that time, we had Lakes Country Service Co-op sponsored a website, it's called HR360, and as part of that website, they have what's called a performance review builder. And what it is, it's an automated system for performance management and performance evaluations. And so, we took a look at that, liked what we saw, and I took that back to the committee, and they all liked it. They said that we should pursue this. And so, after that, I took it to the managers, one of the managers' meetings, and did a demo of it, and they, they also liked it, thought it was extremely easy to use, cut the, the time to do performance evaluations in, in half, probably, at least. And after that, we took it to the PIC, where I did another demo of it as well. And so, that's where we are right now, is I'm bringing it to the board for action. As part of this, I was adding some language to the personnel policy to, and what was kind of curious is there was nothing on performance evaluations in the personnel policy, like when they're due or whatever, so I'm not sure if that was just missed, or why it wasn't in there. So, I think in your packet, I added a, an addition to the personnel policy language that would be added to that. Some of the things that this is going to do for us is, number one, is going to uncouple, what we want to do, and what we're trying to get to, is uncoupling the steps from the performance evaluation. And the reason we're doing that is because we don't, we don't, the way we do our steps, it's not a performance-based evaluation system, okay? It's just more, you're here this many years, you're going to get your step timed. And so, we're looking at uncoupling the steps with the performance evaluation, so on their anniversary, they would get their steps. If we are having performance eval, uh, performance problems with an employee, they would be handled through the performance and discipline process, written reprimands, or suspensions, and then performance plans as well. So, that would be separate than what the step system would be.
Well, you would already have an indication of that before their anniversary.
Exactly. And it would be probably reflected on the performance evaluation as well. Then, what we would end up doing is, if approved today, we would, I would start training the supervisors and managers and department heads on how to use the system. To tell you the truth, it's extremely simple. The other nice thing about this system is it, you can tailor it to what the PD, what your PDQ is. So, if you're a building maintenance guy, you may have different categories than, say, an attorney. It's going to be based on your, your, what you do as a job. So, timeliness and, and all of that might be more important to being a custodian, but professionalism and everything else might be more important to, part of being an attorney or somebody like that. So, this performance evaluation system, this HR360, allows you to choose different categories based on what your PDQ says. So, what we'll be looking at doing is training the supervisors and whoever does performance evaluations, that we will, how to use this system, and then what they'll do is they'll get a username and password from Lakes Country to start beginning to use this system. The other nice thing about this system is it can, it's, it's very quick to fill out, and it's electronic, so we can email things back and forth. The only thing that we will have to do, the departments will have to do, is they'll have to print it out to give it to the person for signature, but then they would scan it in, it would be sent to HR, and then it would go straight into their personnel file. And then that hard copy would probably get, be given to the employee for their personal records, if they wanted to keep a personal thing. So, this HR360, it seems to be a good program, and it also has other HR-related things on it, so if people are interested in retirements or benefits, or whatever, it gives some information in that as well. So, what I would like today is for you to approve the use of the HR360 for the performance evaluations, and also the update on the personnel polit, policy language. So, and besides that, I'm open for questions.
Any questions?
No, you're saying this doesn't get tied to the step increases? Aren't the step increases in the performance evaluation pretty much on a yearly basis when they're hired?
Correct. Yeah, the intent is still, they're going to have their annual evaluation on their yearly anniversary.
Okay.
And we would also give them a step on their yearly anniversary. The problem that we're having is some people don't get their steps, or don't get their performance evaluations till two months, three months, four months.
So, they would still get their step increase even though they would make, come up with a bad performance evaluation?
Yeah. And that's why we would want to handle that through the disciplinary process. If you, if you are to the point where you don't think you should get a step, you should probably be on a performance plan, you should have probably had some coachings, some written, written reprimands possibly. So, we want to try to discouple.
But the performance evaluation is late, and he's already got a step increase. You're going to take a step increase away, and then they're...
No. No, that, and what we're trying to do is base that on just years of service. And I think in the long run, that will help us. The thing that we'll want to do is, it, it's not, in my opinion, it's not fair for an employee who is doing a good job to have to wait for their step increase months and months, because the supervisor hasn't provided the performance evaluation for them, and it happens. Now, when they do get steps, the managers are a little bit more aware of that, and they try to get those in first, but we've had performance evaluations that are, you know, months and months late.
But...
And what we end up having to do also is figure out all that retro pay. So, we retro pay it back to their anniversary date, and then we got to figure out how many hours, was there any overtime, what different rates of overtime, and then we have to figure out what the retro pay would be for that person.
But Darren, if I can piggyback on your question, do you have any, do you have more for Frank?
Well, I was just going to, you know, okay, supervisor's late on his evaluations, and employee didn't get a step increase, whatever the case is. Do we track about that supervisor who's late on the evaluations? Is that coming up on his performance evaluation? I mean, do we track how many times a supervisor is late on his evaluations?
I wouldn't say we track it, but we know. We know who's usually late, and, uh, what was I going to say? Yeah. I would say that the, the amount of times, I've been here six, almost six and a half years, and I would say that we have probably held four or five steps due to performance in that amount of time. Now, you figure, you know, we're doing four hundred evaluations a year over six-year time.
One percent.
The fact that we've held four or five is a small problem in this, in this respect.
So, that's going to what he was talking about, so, so there has been a history of steps being withheld for poor performance?
Yes, there has been a few.
Which should be.
There has been a few, yeah.
There should be.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, you're going to give somebody, I, I know it's supposed to be a length of service deal, but if somebody's not, you know, doing, doing their job, then...
Yeah, and hopefully, we would know, I mean, if it gets to that point where we're starting to hold steps, that, that individual probably won't be around for that much longer.
Well, and that's...
I mean, it's usually in some extreme cases, where they're on a performance plan or something like that.
That's what I, what I asked you earlier. You're going to know about that before the step increase would happen.
Right.
There's going to be some disciplinary procedure that started.
Right, exactly. And, and that usually happens before the, the evaluation even comes around, that we know that there's some serious issue. I mean, it has to be pretty serious to hold a step at this point. Like I said, it doesn't happen very often.
Well, I, you know, we reviewed that software, and it's, it certainly is...
Well, I have no problem with the program.
Yeah, well, my question, though, and this goes to Jenny Samardzija, you know, we looked at all of these different things, and like you said, there's different, you can have something different for building maintenance versus highway, and you can tailor that to the way you want it, but there was a lot of default language in there, and some of it we thought should come out, if you remember those discussions we had.
Yeah.
So, I, so where, where has, has that work been done?
Yeah, I've already done that. What I did was, after our discussion in the PIC meeting, I went back and made basically the training slides. I have them here, but I don't know if you want to see them now, but, and what I ended up doing is making the training slides and identifying those areas. Like, I know in the PIC committee, we, we talked about using just one criteria, you know, meet succeeds standards.
Right.
And so, that would be in, as part of the training. The other thing with this is you can save this document as a Word document, and then you can change some things in it, so if you don't like the exact language that's in there already, you can go back and change it. And so, that's part of the training that we would go through, is, and I know the, the other thing that was talked about was the overall rating, and taking that piece out because it's a score.
Right, right.
So, we had some discussions on that. As part of this...
And I think our county attorney had some problems with that language.
Yep. And so, as part of the training, on one of the slides, I showed how to, you know, take that off, the process of doing that, so.
All right.
Questions?
Well, I know, from the PIC committee, I mean, we certainly felt it was worthwhile to bring forward to the board for consideration, so.
Yeah, they, most people thought that, you know, an annual evaluation is beneficial, and it should be tailored to the job, and, and so, what we found in the study is, most people are, don't mind the evaluation system, they, they think it's a fairly good system with some tweaks put into it. And the problem is, we didn't want to throw more evaluations, because some of the things we kicked around was, well, should we do smaller evaluations every quarter, or every half year, or whatever? And that just didn't gain a lot of traction, because it's hard enough to do evaluations yearly for some of these departments that have a lot of people in them. So, we, we wanted to make it easier to do the evaluation, and that's what I think this program does, so.
So, we have two requests. One is to move forward with this new software system.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
And then the second would be the language changes to the personnel policy.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
What's the board's wishes?
I'll make a motion to move forward.
Second? Is there a second? Second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same sign. Motion carried. And then we have the, there's two proposed changes.
Yeah, there's actually, the, the, the first one is already in there, I just wanted to highlight that.
Oh, okay.
That one is an existing one.
So, this, it's just a...
And then the, the second page would be the additional.
That's the only, okay.
Correct.
And then, Jenny Samardzija, does this meet with your rule?
Yes, it does.
I'll make a motion to change the salary, I mean, changes to the performance evaluation.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Darren.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we have the approval of asbestos abatement quote for the jail and annex buildings. Joe, you're getting to be a familiar face up there.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, working with the jail committee, or the jail construction committee, one of the things we have to do as part of the demo process when we take down both the annex and LEC building is that we, all the asbestos has to be removed prior to getting the demo permit, so what we've done is we've tested all the buildings, identified where it is, and I've gotten two quotes on what it will take to remove for both buildings, and it, this is planned to happen in 2018, at the end of June, it's a year away, but it's, it's a pretty critical timeline of a ten-day period that has to happen in order to not slow the jail project down, so the committee felt that we needed to get this booked and done as soon as we could. I have two quotes, one from Mabel Systems at sixty-eight, four-four-zero, and Horsley Specialties came in at seventy-eight oh six, or seventy thousand eight oh six, and both companies very good. Mabel Systems is, came in lower, I'd like to move forward with them. They're who we used for all the home buyouts, and I felt they did a very quick job, or quick, very good job, so.
Okay, motion or motion?
Uh, when we were budgeting this, did we assume that there would be a significant amount of asbestos removal?
Well, I know, yeah, we knew that we had some asbestos to deal with. As far as the budgeting part, it's, it's part of the demo process, and it'd be taken out of that, you know, within the jail project, out of the demo portion.
I think, I think we had three hundred figured for demolition, and the actual bid for that came in at two fifty or something, and so I think we're going to be pretty close to being...
Yeah.
Isn't this part of the jail project?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, but it still is a, it still is something that we still have to approve the quote, the low quote, because it's, it's not part of the gross maximum price through our...
Those are construction engineers, it's not handling this.
Right. This is outside of construction engineers.
Yep, yep. This is something when we, the county handled the home buyouts, and it's, the asbestos is going right into the, the buildings too.
We had, we had planned for it financially, but it's just not part of the gross maximum price, it never was.
I'll move to approve the mail-in systems bid.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Seeing as we have a significant amount of people for the public hearing at nine, do we want to do the agenda additions since Steve is here?
We can try. They, that might take a little time.
Okay.
Let's, well, let's go into it, let's see, we might have to just come back to it. Steve, you want to come up and we'll start your agenda items here?
Good morning.
Depending on, good morning. Depending on the number of questions, we might have to just recess our discussion with you to go to the public hearing.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, for adding these two agenda items today. The first request that I have before you is actually a two-part piece. It's requesting to, to approval from the board to move forward with continuing to work with the Michael J. Burns Architect Firm. As you guys know, in May of 2015, this board approved our ability to, to work with the Michael J. Burns Firm up to forty hours to look at a feasibility study of either remodeling and/or expanding our current location to, to add more beds. Prior to this, we added additional eight beds in our secure unit going from twenty-four to thirty-two, and in our non-secure program going from twelve to fifteen, but the Minnesota Department of Corrections stated that our, we were at capacity, and we couldn't do anything more. And so, that's been compounded by the issues in Minnesota. We've had some pretty significant facilities that have closed, and that's impacted at the speed at which many of our kids in the secure program and non-secure program are able to move forward. And so, our late, late winter, early spring, we dusted off the old, old drawings, and we had three additional meetings with the Michael J. Burns Architect Firm, and, and came up with about those three meetings, about a little over five thousand dollars with additional costs, and so, I guess we felt imperative to bring it before this board to determine if, if continuing to move forward would be something that they would like us to, with looking at a potential remodel and expansion, and also if, in the addition, if that were to happen, that we spend up to an additional twenty-five thousand dollars with meetings and additional architectural drawings.
And your proposal, that could come out of the reserve...
Facility reserves, so secure, correct.
Motion or...
Mr. Chair, we have had some discussions at our auto home placement committee about how to help ease that burden, and I think this has been a preliminary issue that's been identified to help alleviate some of that, and so, I, I can't speak for Commissioner Gross, but I think it was a general consensus among that group that going this avenue would be a good step towards that.
Very good, very good.
Did we do anything with the, I mean, they, they did prior reports already.
That's correct.
So, what are we doing with those? I mean, we paid for those?
We paid for those, and in, in talking with Michael J. Burns, he stated that in the event that we moved forward with the projects, that the dollar amounts that we spent would be credited moving forward.
I, I think what we're, what we're after now, Frank, is, is the, what we can get out of this is more detailed plans with a more accurate...
Hard, hard costs.
Hard costs that, to, to do these things, so, and, and keep in mind, once we have this, then we, we still have the negotiations with our member counties and...
Correct.
And all the stuff, so it's...
Yeah, we've had a lot of meetings on this, and, you know, I, I think it's got a lot of potential to ease some of our problems. We're going to be dealing with Rhonda and Social Services to help address some of their issues by, you know, working on this project, and it, it has the potential to significantly increase our secure detention, but as well, I think maybe even more important, our, some of our non-secure issues and our auto home placement problems that, you know, we've all been dealing with for the last year or so, so.
All right.
Well, I'll move to approve the, going forward with Burns on the twenty-five thousand, up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, and that comes out of reserve. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second? And I just want to comment, I think it's, I think it's wise for us to do this, and it's, the early indications are, it could really be a potential help to the county.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Steve, and your other one is the request for a full-time position.
Yes, we just recently had a, had a resignation of one of our secure male full-time counselors, and I would be requesting that we be allowed to rehire that and, and backfill any positions that were potentially caused by that hire.
Will approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Does this include the backfill?
Yes.
He said that, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same sign. And a motion carried, and we are still just a couple minutes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have a short committee report they want to give?
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Muggs?
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Cascay Food Systems Initiative, where we had presentations on gleaning. It's, was something that was new to me, but as you recall, we're coming up with blueprints to address urban agriculture issues in the area. Gleaning is a process where farmers leave a portion of their crop and either allow people that may not have access to food to come in and harvest it, or they donate a significant amount. We had good presentations from the Great Plains Food Bank. I was not aware that they have three semis that travel across North Dakota and some of western Minnesota, and if farmers have excess in the field, they can pick that up if there's extra potatoes, and, and then they use that to donate. We also had a presentation from the Hardin Soul Community Cafe and Woodchuck Community Farm, so we are moving forward on those blueprints. We did approve the residential gardening blueprint, and those are all available through MetroCog. And then, I appreciate the work that the jail construction committee did, especially our chair, on organizing a very, a great groundbreaking for the jail and law enforcement center. We had good community support, and I think we have had a significant timeline building up to this, but it, it really did include a lot of community input and support, and that was evident in the people that showed up to that, so thank you for that.
Okay, I think at this time, we'll, it's... Tim, are you ready to come up for the public hearing? We'll, we'll, I'll make a motion. Okay, we'll move into our public hearing. We have a motion to open the hearing in a second. And this is a public hearing with Great Basin Inc. and Nugget Investment LLC, request for final approval on Lot 11 Plotted Subdivision Harley Township. Tim, good morning.
Just let me make a correction right from the start. It's, it's ten lots total. The lots were misnumbered on the plat, the drawing that we got on...
They had to take one off, right?
Yeah, they just had to change the numbers on them.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's, that's all that was there. Uh... As you stated, Mr. Chair, this is a, a public hearing for the approval of a final plat request for Great Basin Nugget Investment. Just to give you an idea as to where it is, this is County Highway 10, this is the landfill road, One Hundred and Ninetieth Street. This is the, the area known as Mountain's Edition. It's not a platted subdivision, but there's about sixty-some odd residential sites and homes there. This would be the primary access road down to the subdivision, which would be located down here on Twelfth, Twelfth Avenue South. Twelfth Avenue from this corner to the landfill road is not maintained, it's a no-maintenance road. The county does not allow plats on no-maintenance roads, so as part of this process, the road will have to be reconstructed from this point to the west edge of the property into a road of county spec for the county highway department to be able to go in and maintain it.
And that was a condition of the planning commission, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's a condition for the... That's, that's a condition for the, for the development, is that this road has to be upgraded so that it could be considered a, a year-round maintenance road that the highway department can do summer and winter maintenance on. It would end right here, so this would still be maintained, well, actually not maintained, so.
Would that become a township road?
Oh, they are township roads already.
Okay, so it's just a, it's not a year-round maintenance?
This, this, I'm not exactly sure what the township calls it, um, whether it's considered a cartway, or, uh, or it was actually built as a township road, but, but it does provide access, you know, across that, that mile there. Uh, and again, we've also got another platted subdivision over here, Henry Estates, an eight-lot platted subdivision, so. Oh, and just, just to let you know, there's a feedlot down here that created some issues for this. County ordinance requires that we have, maintain a half-mile separation from feedlots to platted subdivisions, so, uh, there was a variance request made, the variance request was denied, so there was a change on the very west end where one lot had to be dropped off, and there had to be a little modification of, of the next lot overs.
Excuse me, are you saying that road has got, I mean, it's a township road now, it's going to be switched to a county road?
It will not be switched to a county road, but since the townships don't have any specifications for their roads, they utilize county road specifications, that it will have to be constructed to county road specs so that the county highway department, uh, by contract with the township, will go in and maintain it.
So that would, that would need the, uh, isn't the county's, um, is it sixty-six feet from center?
Right, the, the right-of-way is seventy feet there, I mean, that what they're, they're providing is seventy feet wide, so putting a twenty-four to twenty-six foot top there, uh, shouldn't be an issue at all. But that, that too will be a responsibility, uh, I guess a negotiated responsibility between the township and the developer as to...
Right, that's not ever...
Who and how pays, pays for the upgrade of that road, so.
Okay.
Anyway, uh, you have in front of you, uh, a copy of the plat itself. This is the area where they had to do a little bit of rearranging because of the two mi- or the half-mile setback. And, uh, something that's different on this proposed plat than anything we've seen before is, being this road is intended to be maintained as a through road, uh, the thought of putting a cul-de-sac here, which the highway department likes to see because they're the easiest to deal with when it comes to running a truck down there and turning that around. Uh, what's being proposed is what's called a hammerhead turn here where the truck will go by and then, then back in and then back out, or then pull back out, be able to turn around at that end. I know that there's some discussion, there has been some discussion between the highway department and, uh, and the surveyor to, to work on, on appropriate size for this turn down here, so. The idea of putting a cul-de-sac down here, uh, you know, it could be done, but again, township would like to see that maintained as a through road, at least that's what we've, we understand. Put a cul-de-sac down there and it kind of appears that the road ends. You can have a cul-de-sac with a hole in it, I suppose, but in the wintertime, if they're doing snow, snow removal, they're going to block it all up anyway, so. Uh, in this, utilizing this configuration, they can, they can go down, they can push the snow off to the sides and then turn around and push it off to the side on the way back. This also, so shows a little bit of reconfiguration over here on the east end. Currently, the road that comes in here, uh, comes through a pri- a private property right here, most of the road is on this private property coming in, so there'll be some, some work done on the east end there also, uh, relative to, uh, road configuration. And this is just what it looks like when you drop it on an aerial photograph. These are the nine lots that would be residential lots. They're all meet the county requirements, and they're all, I believe, two acres in size, more than two-hundred feet in frontage. Hell, the sanitary, environmental services has been out there and looked at test pits and found that, that it appears that, that onsite sewage treatment won't be an issue there. Uh, they did the same thing on the big, big lot up here. Uh, this is too wet to be able to put on sites in, but it's being included as a, its own lot and block, uh, kind of a reserve, uh, property for, you know, wildlife, whatever. Also, in the future, it does afford a place for the Heartland Trail. Uh, we discussed that at the planning commission meeting, uh, a couple of times, the ability for, this is one, I believe, the, the trail that they, route that the Heartland Trail is looking at using, and, uh, they have said that they would allow the Heartland Trail and easement to cross this northern lot to be able to get through there, so.
Before we go on, just a couple of things on this thing here. On the memorandum we got, you know, just, what, it's housekeeping, whatever it is, on item number two, it says Twelfth Avenue North.
That's an error.
That's an error. On the request, application for platted subdivision, it says Twelfth Avenue North, and here's Twelfth Avenue South, and I see Fourteenth Avenue South is a, a block north of there.
Yep.
So, I mean, should this be Thirteenth or Fifth Avenue South, or, I mean, are we renaming, are we naming this?
No, the street's not being renamed. The twel- reference to Twelfth Avenue North there is incorrect, but this has always been the same. This has been Twelfth Avenue, and this has been Fourteenth.
Doesn't make sense, but...
I, I don't, I don't number streets, so, I guess I, um, I'd have to defer to either the township or Mark Sloan.
Okay, there's just some housekeeping things I didn't follow.
One other thing that, at the last planning commission meeting, is they, uh, they got preliminary approval from the planning commission for the plat that's laid out right here, and they also got approval of a, an interim use permit to do mining on this property down here. I believe the term of that mining was, that mining permit was December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. But they do have the opportunity to, to do some gravel removal in this area, and, uh, how that's going to affect their future plans, I guess I'm not sure, but their future plans initially had looked like this, where they would put residential lots along this road to begin with, and then ultimately come down in behind it with additional lots, and then some additional lots up here to the north, northwest.
So when was this, when was this mining?
The same night.
It was the same night. They got approval of the plat, and we rolled right into another public hearing for approval of, or, for a request for a mining, mining permit. I think most of us thought it was going to be an either-or, but...
Did this come before us back in March?
To remove the aggregate?
Section to the south there?
Yeah. Right, the, one of the things that you have already taken a, an action on was this had the aggregate resource overlay district there, and the, of the county board did remove that on these two parcels, so. The plat drawing that you've got in front of you, there still need to be some, some corrections made, and, uh, I think they've got you as a chair, and I don't know if you want to be the chair this year or not.
Oh, for what?
Uh, on the plat drawing that was, was, uh, in front of you this morning. Before anything got recorded, everything will be brought up and corrected, so.
So, so what's before the county board today is only the platted subdivision?
Only the platted subdivision.
For the ten lots?
Yes.
There's going to be some discussion, I think, regarding the gravel pit, but that's, that's nothing that we're even dealing with today.
That's, that's not anything that was addressed, it's not something you can't address, there's been no appeal to that, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, the procedural, uh, posture of this is that for platted subdivisions, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the county board, and it is the final decision of the county board whether or not this is approved or denied. The interim use permit, which was heard also that night, uh, is a final decision by the planning commission that can be appealed, but it has not been appealed, so.
Yeah, just, 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 just so the, the audience knows, because I know I, I got a call yesterday regarding the mining component of it, that this, they were sneaking in a mining thing or whatever, aggregate, and, and, and I assured them that that was not what we're dealing with today. But if the planning commission heard that and, and moved on it, and there's, there's opposition to that, they have the right to appeal that, but it would be a separate hearing by this board.
Correct.
Okay, I just, just so the people in the audience know the formalities of these two different things, so. Because I know there's some concern about the gravel mining.
If you read the memo, um, you know, there's, there's some here and there on this whole process, the, the final vote, the, you know, the motion to approve, it was a five-to-five tie, and was broken by the chair of the planning commission, so it was six-to-five in favor.
So, uh, at this point, Tim, if you're done, we'll, if there's no question, or we want to wait, and we can hear from, from the public, uh, but, but the, and the applicant is here, all right, so we can hear from the applicant, and you're welcome to come up to the microphone up there, and you would state your name and your address for the record. And if we can keep today's discussion to this platted subdivision, your issues on the platted subdivision, this public hearing has nothing to do with mining, so we just need to understand that for legality purposes, so. So any, if any of the public would like to come up to the...
Applicant first.
Applicant? Applicant?
Thank you.
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, folks. Yeah, you, Tim went over and stuff, he pretty much covered it pretty thoroughly, that we are following all the ordinances with the county and stuff, and we're going above and below.
Just a second, can you state your name?
I apologize, sorry about that. It's Raymond Redding, address is six seventeen Valley Street, Holly, Minnesota, with Nugget Investments. As Tim stated before, we are following all the rules and regulations and ordinances with the development, actually going above the county standards, minimum of one and a half acre-sized lots, and bumped it up to two acre-sized lots because the township, uh, felt it was the best for their ordinances too, to have a little bit increased size out there, because it would fall into play very conducive with the Bowton addition we saw previously, which is, I believe, is in sixty, I think it's eighty-some lots up there, and then also Larry Henry's, um, addition also, so it's a, it would tie in perfectly between two already approved subdivisions and housing communities. Uh, the property itself has no agricultural value whatsoever, so I'm really, we are really following the comprehensive plan with the county and not taking any prime ag land out whatsoever. Uh, the CERs, which are called the Crop Equivalency Ratians, average are less than fifty percent, with forty, forty-three percent being at two, which is basically, I mean, there's no value whatsoever. So we're not taking any ag value out. We also went to the local county ordinance, or not the county ordinances, but the township, federal and state agencies, right before we even started this process, to make sure we're following compliance with all the rules and regulations for environmental concerns, and we have those letters, I don't know if they're in your packet with you today, but they were with the planning commission, that shows that we followed in compliance with all of those also. So we always take an extra step to make sure we do everything right from the very beginning. Uh, we also, like you said, going over the Heartland Trail system, working with them on the northern portion there, to incorporate the Heartland Trail system with our county into that also. So, just wanted, any questions you folks have for me on, uh, application, or the...
Excuse me, what, on the Hartland Trail, who did you talk to, the Hartland Trail?
We had the representative, I don't remember his name, so I apologize for that. Um, he contacted me and asked if we'd be willing to work, you know, with them or whatever, if this got approved for the Heartland Trail system through that area. And I said, absolutely. Yeah, I think it's such in the infant stages already, you know what I mean? I was also at a, to our, uh, to our, the City of Holly meeting too, and they were talking about it there too, trying to work with that on connectivity to the City of Holly, and then bring it down through here also. So I've been working with the City of Holly on that too, so, yeah.
Right, any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, any other, um, anybody else would like to be heard?
Good morning. I'm Chris Hayer with Moore Engineering at nine twenty-five, uh, Ninth Street East in, uh, in, uh, West Fargo. Um, I was the one that prepared the preliminary plat, and I wanted to come up and find, you know, answer any questions you might have. Um, that large lot on the north side, um, as we've been talking about, that is intended to be a nature area, and it's also intended to be an area that any stormwater pond, um, that is going to need to be designed for this development, uh, for the SWIP plan, um, there's ample area for that in this lot as well. That, um, area that is anticipated to, um, have the pond area would be right in, in this corner. So, um, right now, it's, it's in its infant stage as far as the design work pending the, the final approval of the preliminary plat, and then we can get moving into that phase of the work. Modifications were made between the preliminary plat that the planning commission reviewed, and what you are seeing mostly due to, um, raises that the, uh, county highway department had requested to be put in, it started to cut into the area of the lot, and so, we did a little tweaking to the plat to, to conform with their request, uh, for the turnaround versus the cul-de-sac.
Is there a, a ditch system for drainage then?
There will be a ditch system that will be incorporated when the road is improved to the, to the county specifications, uh, to make it a, uh, year, year-round maintenance road.
And, uh, with developments like this, is, is the township that this is in, is, are they required to do the MS four, uh, permit for, for drainage? Isn't that what that's called, the MS four?
Uh, the SWIP plan, um, yeah, that, that's going to be part of the, of the design work that we're actually doing for the, for the upgrading of the road.
Tim, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, MS four, I'm not sure that there's any township that's doing MS four.
I know Upport, Upport did an MS four when I was there.
Well, there, there might be some townships, I guess I'm not familiar with, uh, townships doing MS fours, but...
All right, thank you.
In general, the developer will work in conjunction with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency in developing that stormwater pollution protection plan and any MS four criteria that need to be met.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens who wish to be heard while the public hearing is open?
Got a lot of people here, I'm wondering, are you here to support this or opposed to it, so?
Sure, you're...
Uh, my name is Bill Hemming. My wife Bev and I live, uh, on Two Hundredth Street, uh, where we've resided for thirty-three years. Uh, the addition of the proposed major subdivision will change the essential character of this rural area. Those of us who have purchased or built homes along Two Hundredth Street and Twelfth Avenue South did so to enjoy rural living, not to have two major subdivisions developed in our immediate neighborhood. Uh, the developer of Bison Ridge Estates has informed the county and the township of his intent to develop the subject property in phases, ultimately with a housing density and population equivalent to that of a small city. Uh, our county land use code is designed to minimize the negative effects of development on other properties in the area. I've discussed the proposed development with two longtime real estate brokers, one from Detroit Lakes and another from Fargo. Both confirmed that this major subdivision, along with the associated traffic past our homes, will adversely affect our property values. Two Hundredth Street South, which is a mile long, twenty-two-foot-wide gravel road, already serves as the primary route to the recently established Henry Estates subdivision. The addition of another major subdivision served by the same township road is not reasonable. Two Hundredth Street is neither designed nor constructed for the anticipated traffic volume. The developer's plat drawing shows single-access roads into the subdivision parcels. A recently retired fire chief I spoke to with, with one of the region's larger combined municipal rural fire districts reviewed the plat drawings and immediately recognized that this creates legitimate and serious concerns for emergency vehicle access, for emergency responder and resident safety. The use of cul-de-sacs or hammerhead turns as designs appears to be non-compliant with the existing county code that, for good reason, limits the maximum length of cul-de-sac roads to one-quarter mile. The plan shows road lengths of approximately one-half mile. I've heard comments the property owners should be, should have the right to do something with their property, and I agree, but not to the extent of infringing upon others' rights to the quiet enjoyment of their properties, or where the intended use causes harm to others. Also bear in mind that this is a corporation that purchased the property seeking to make a profit. Various studies, including one by the University of Minnesota, have determined that creation of rural subdivisions, in the majority of cases, is not positive economic development for low... in the majority of cases is not positive economic development for local government or for its citizens. The cost of providing public services exceeds tax revenues generated by rural subdivision developments. I respectfully urge the commission to deny the plat application. Thank you.
Commissioner Moeller.
I just have a question.
Yes.
I know that we were all at that late Tuesday meeting, so I appreciate that. One question I guess I, I wasn't able to ask was, uh, and have thought about it since. Do, since you live on the same road basically as the Henry subdivision, did you, do you support or oppose what that? Did you support or oppose that when that was going in?
I wasn't even aware that that was going yet.
And then my, I guess maybe my follow-up question is because we can only act on the platted proposal that's in front of us today, right? And that's the, the ten lots. Um, so because that is, basically duplicates what the Henry eight, eight or nine lots, what that was. Has that negatively affected the roads in your opinion, having that nine?
Well, there's two homes, I think, uh, in that subdivision currently. Uh, a third is being built this year, I believe, and I think other lots have been sold off. And we have noticed a substantial, and I'm, I'm serious when I say a substantial increase in traffic on the road. That's from a yet-to-be-developed eight-lot subdivision. Now we're talking about ten additional lots, and now we've got eighteen homes with all of the associated traffic. And bear in mind that all of this is proposed to come along two hundredth street and access highway ten. Uh, if any of you have driven highway ten, uh, in the mornings, uh, you know, majority of that traffic admittedly is going to be turning left and heading into Fargo Moorhead where those folks are gonna work. It's gonna create quite a traffic congestion and potential for, uh, traffic, uh, accidents. And just the sheer volume of traffic going past our houses. Um, three of the homes along two hundredth street have young children in them. Uh, another home along twelfth avenue south has young children present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments?
Hi. My name's Claudia Murray, my husband and I live in the home directly next to the proposed development on twelfth avenue. Yeah, um, right there in the clearing, thanks, Tim. Um, we're definitely opposed to this subdivision going in. Um, one of our biggest concerns for this subdivision is that even though the section of the road going through the subdivision is proposed to be upgraded, needs to be upgraded. And that's a condition of the development. Um, the rest of the road is not going to be upgraded, the road is not going to be, um, cut off at that point. And it's a very windy, narrow road. Um, the legal description for the road is sixty-six feet wide. Um, but it is not where, not anywhere near that, I think it's probably about half right now. Um, in fact, I have some pictures that I'd like to submit if that's okay, so that you may see them. In these pictures, there's a small, um, corolla in some of them to show, help, give you some perspective, the size of the road. Um, it also shows the bends and a lot of blind corners. Um, so, I, I, even though I know that the developer is proposing that people use two hundredth street um, to gain access to highway ten, that is all gravel. Um, if they go ahead and go from twelfth avenue to the landfill road, that's a half mile to get to a paved road. Now, will some people use two hundredth street? Probably. Um, but I also see that some people may use the, um, other half of twelfth avenue to get to a, um, a paved road because it's faster. And that concerns me because of the condition of the road. And yes, I do have two young kids that like to ride their bikes on that road. Um, so that is definitely an issue for me. And so if that road, if the township or somehow someone else said that they needed to upgrade that road. Then my concern becomes, we have neighbors at the end of the road, the Thompsons. Their house is very close to the edge of that road. If they were to widen that road, from our, um, brief research. It looks like it would only be about twelve, fifteen feet away from their front steps. That is very close, not to say that I haven't seen that before. But that is just so close for a road, for a house to be to a road, that really concerns me. Um, and so, yeah, definitely the road is a big issue. Some of the other issues that I have with it is, um, the flow of the water, that water's, that land, um, tends to be very wet and swampy. And as it gets developed, is that going to affect the flow of the land? I know the developers and the engineer have talked about how, you know, they have holding ponds and things, but I still think that could definitely change the flow of the water and where it goes. And the Thompsons have, the people on the end, have had water issues before in wet years. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I, I, I do wanna, maybe we can get the, um, engineer to come up and, um, talk about that drainage issue. I'm curious, uh, how that holding pond is designed, you can, you can, thank you.
Sure, sure. Uh, the MPCA requires that, uh, for developments such as this, that all water, um, that is runoff has to be contained and released at the same rate that it is today. So when we design the, the SWIP plan and the, and the ditches and the ponds, we design it in a way that will hold the water and then allow it to be released at the same rate as it is today, cannot be in excess of today. So everything will have to be designed in that manner.
So, is that considered a, a dry pond typically, then, and then just in, in rain events or whatever, this spring thaw?
Correct.
Collects that, slows it down and allows it to filter, or is that?
That is correct, that is correct, yes.
Thank you. Do you have any further comments from the public? Uh, the pictures that you submitted, would, would you like to have that be part of the record?
Yes, please.
Okay, alright, we'll keep those then.
My name is Angiee Weeby, I live on, on, on maintenance road. And I've been, I think this is my sixteenth or seventeenth meeting concerning this issue. And it's all about the roads. Um, the, too much traffic for the little, little roads we have existing right now. Um, I work at the elementary school and there are so many curves on twelfth avenue by where we live that I, I would be just devastated if a child would be killed there. And I have not a voice because evidently I've stated this and stated this, and it's never been addressed. So, if there was anybody killed or injured, uh, it was beyond my control. And I just think people are gonna die there. And I don't, I don't wanna see it, I'm sorry.
I just wanna clarify, these three homes on twelfth avenue south, which is the cartway, did you access your home from the cartway? Or do you access your home from the Bowden addition?
We go about two miles an hour from the landfill road in.
Oh, okay.
Because I've almost hit snowmobiles, little kids, and four-wheelers, and it's really tough.
So, like, my question is, maybe, have you addressed those concerns? This is a township road, right? So have you addressed the concerns of access to the township?
Um.
Ma'am, can we have you go back to the microphone, please, we, thank you.
I didn't ask for questions, I'm so sorry, I apologize.
No, no, that's okay, I just wanna clarify, cause I'm.
Since we've lived there, we have graded it, we have put gravel on it, and we have cleared it.
Okay.
We don't see the township. Um, I wasn't aware that they did anything or could do anything, because they've never done anything.
I guess.
At one point, there was a culvert that went out, and they did replace that because there was a huge, um, part of the road.
I guess that's my concern, is if, if we have a existing public safety concern that's there, right, if you're saying.
Well, it's been there forever, and.
And I'm just saying, there seems to be a disconnect, if nothing's happened, that seems to fall maybe on the township, that, that the township should have been keeping.
But you have to understand, there's not many people on that road, and it's a cart trail. So, and it says, non-maintenance road, enter at your own risk. So, we haven't had a lot of people, except orange people around hunting, they love to come down that road, but we haven't had an issue.
I, I guess I thought I said, I thought I heard you say that you've almost hit people, and so that's what I'm.
Oh, yes, always, I mean.
Then that seems to be an issue, I guess that maybe we should.
Because it's a blind curve. So you go very slow, my kids know to go very slow. But also, um, it's the ability of little kids to be, you know, they're in the country, they want four-wheelers, they want go-karts, they want to go on the bicycle, I mean, it's just Minnesota, I think, rural area.
I get it, I got little kids, I know, I know. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying that if there are.
How many times have I come out and said, you guys can't race on this because of the curves, you know, so?
I worry.
Tim, did you wanna?
Uh, I was gonna say, as far as maintenance is concerned, if this is a cartway, cartways are established by townships. The survey work and everything else is actually paid for by whoever wanted it established. And that, they're considered a public right-of-way, but townships have no maintenance responsibilities for them. They can create them, and they are township cartway, but the township is not required to do maintenance on them.
So these residents do all the snow clearing on that cartway, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Ever since we've lived here.
Tim, what were some of the issues, um, since it was split at the planning commission, what were the contentious issues there, why it was split?
Am I done?
No, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
I have some really rough, rough minutes to grab to hear me. Some of the contentious issues were, uh, actually, some of them had to do with the feedlot, a number of them had to do with the feedlot. Even though there was a variance granted, or not granted, uh, to the half-mile, there was still concern that you know, allowing a, a development in there, if the feedlot wanted to expand to the east down here, it, it put constraints on them and limited their ability to do an expansion there. The other one is, uh, is the, the other things that have been brought up here today is access. You know, the, the whole idea of two hundredth is gonna be the access, well, that's all well and good, but you know as well as I do, that if a person's living, you know, in this lot right here, and if there hasn't been a blizzard in the last three days. And you can get out to a paved highway, you know, in a half-mile as opposed to, you know, a mile, a quarter gravel road. That you may offer to go there more often than not go that direction. So the increase in traffic on this road, if it's not improved beyond what it is now, could create some issues. Another point is the driveway, I showed that there's a realignment proposed. You see that right now, the twelfth avenue access takes off the northwest corner of this private property right here, I mean, why there's not direct, I mean, there wasn't a T here somewhere. But, uh, the road starts up here off of fourteenth avenue, it comes across the northwest corner of this property and then to the east. With increased traffic, um, this needs to be rearranged somehow to lessen the impact on the property here. Some people thought that it, it's a natural bridge between the Bowdens Additions and Henry Estates. Other people didn't think that's necessarily the case.
Oh, the request, it says twelfth avenue south has to be improved.
Yes.
How far?
Well, at a minimum, it has to be improved anywhere that the subdivision is, so there's a half-mile run right here, that's gonna have to be improved.
So it really wouldn't affect people, I mean, are people gonna go the other way, or which way, or are we looking at traffic going to the east or the west?
The intent is, is the traffic will come in on two hundredth.
Okay.
And it'll, this road will actually be better once it's improved than, than two hundredth avenue is, it'll be a wider.
So there's no intent to improve twelfth avenue all the way over to a hundred and ninetieth?
That is.
It's up to the township, probably.
Yeah. The requirement would, for improvement would be at a minimum this half-mile in front of the subdivision.
So it looks like most of it's over the roads and, uh, safety issues around the road.
See if I can find anything that just jumps out here. Right now, this, the twelfth avenue is also, uh, part of the Granton Eight snowmobile trail. So, whether that has any impact when it's reconstructed or not, I guess I don't know. But it is part of the existing snowmobile trail.
While you're researching that, do we have any other, um, citizens who would like to be heard?
Um, my name is Rod Heft, I'm at six forty-seven, a hundred and ninety-second, so I'm in the Bowden addition. I guess I have a couple things, um, actually I have a neighbor building on a lot that's been emptying and out. I'm at long lot, uh, right there, the long one going east and west. And there's a gentleman now building in me, next to me on the north, or on the south, right there. And now he's being told by the county that he's got some issues with putting my, keep in mind, he's got his footings in, he's ready to pour his slab on grade. Um, and now he's being told that he's got issues with his septic system. And it, we've always known the water table is very high, and I have a bi-level in there. And the only time my sump pump runs is when that water table comes up. And now he's being told, because of that water table, that he's gotta put a mound system in, and I believe the setback, and I, I haven't researched this, but I believe the setback from a septic system is fifty yards from a well, is that correct?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet, okay. My concern is, is on these, and, and this, keep in mind, this guy's got footings in. And now he's being told he's got issues with putting in his septic. He's got footings in, he's got his house started. And now he's being told that he's gonna have issues. My concern is, how far along, and I know you, you've done your footwork or, or whatever you say. Which I kinda question, because when I remember getting stuff in the mail, this was a seventy-two lot development. And then it went to a sixty-two lot development, and now we're at a ten or eleven, and I hear at the dental office that now there's talk about a gravel pit, and I know we're not supposed to talk about this. But this just seems like we're backing up to whatever you guys are willing to allow, and I know how this works. We're gonna be back here, whether it's four years, it all depends on how those lots sell, but we're gonna be back here in a number of years, wanting more lots. I know how that works, I know how developers work, I understand that. And I, you know what, when that seventy-two lot was coming in, I was okay, because when Henry wanted to do the gravel pit a number of years ago and it got declined, I thought great, doesn't make any sense to put a gravel pit in a seventy-lot development. You would never dream of putting a gravel pit in next to Saban or Baker or any of the other small towns in Clay County. You would never even dream about it, but that's really what we have in Bowden addition. So then when all of a sudden I hear talk about a gravel pit, I'm thinking, where's this coming from? Cause I heard about the Tuesday night, late night, and that that got thrown in at the end. And I know we're not here to talk about mining, but I also know how development works. How do we go from a seventy-two to a sixty-two? And are we really naive enough to think that it's just gonna be a ten, and we're not gonna be back here in five years of all of a sudden? Cause I know as well, as, cause I've had my lot assessed and my property assessed, I know how valuable rural properties are in Clay County. I know they're valuable. But I also didn't move out to Bowden addition, nor did all the kids that take their bikes, their motor, their, their mini bikes and ATVs and everything and drive right by my house, and I'm okay with that, because I chose to live there. But now you're talking about adding more population, potentially, I know we're not talking about it, a mining development which you just took probably, and I told you this yesterday, Kevin, you take all the cities and towns out of Clay County. You tell me who, what's a bigger development than Bowden addition? You would never dream, never dream about even considering, I wasn't, I don't know when that got even platted for gravel pit. But if, you were talking about the edge of Saban, Baker, Georgetown, Tragnus, Yulin, Hitterdall, name any of them. That would have never gotten platted for mining, never. And if you guys think that that developer, and I know, I, 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 I live in Holly and I know the name Raymond Reddy, and I am all okay with development. This just doesn't make sense, because I know where it's gonna go. You're gonna all of a sudden have a very small town out in a rural development, which none of us, whether they built there, I bought a house from a guy who built the house in seventy-nine. seventy-nine, nobody ever envisioned that becoming that. And then you throw on the mining, which I know we're not talking about it, but if you guys think, I, I, I know you're not, but are we really naive enough to think that this is really a ten-unit development? Really? Thanks.
Hi, I'm Biddy Thompson. I live in the trailer house that these guys were all talking about with water and all this stuff like this, and I just wanted to verify that everything that they said was all true. We get water, five, six feet of water, if it rains overly hard sometimes, and it never used to be that way. You could go back years and not have any water. And it just seems like these last few years, maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years, each year gets to be a little bit worse, where these last few years has been good, but sometimes one year in July, which wasn't that many years ago, I had five feet of water in my yard twice in one week, just from overland flooding, where the water just comes from, no river water whatsoever, just overland when Bowden Edition gets a lot of water rain, that comes through our house, you know, through, down by the tracks, all over. And I just wanted to say that these guys did a wonderful job about talking about it and everything. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Tim, did you come up with anything else you wanted, an answer to, Commissioner Welland?
No, I think we, we covered most of the, the issues that were addressed.
So, I just maybe wanna clarify, the gravel mine was approved, right?
Yes.
But part of the conditions were upgrading this road, because you have to have a haul road. So, it's not negotiable for us at this point, I mean, he has to upgrade this road, but because of an existing interim use permit, he already has to upgrade the road, right?
I believe so.
If, if the gravel operation is going to be here.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you again, commissioners, for your time. I just listened to, you know, everybody in their opposition and stuff, and I had a lot of people, the original meeting, that were for it, you know, too, so I had both, but they couldn't make it here today because they're all working, so kinda hard to get it out during a nine AM meeting. Everything that I presented to you, I bring to you facts, proof from all the agencies and everything else. I haven't seen any facts on any opposition. I've heard a lot of hearsay, speculation, what might happen, it could happen, this might be, but no facts, no hard facts. And they talked about traffic, too. We even went to the Department of Transportation, so everything we do, we're always taking the right step to do the right thing and show facts, and that's what I believe that we've done here. So I just ask that the, you know, committee look at the actual facts that are present today for your decision-making. So thank you for your time.
Do we have any other comments?
Paul Weeby, I live on the west end of the Musky Road, right off of the, about a quarter mile in from the landfill road, and, you know, I'm kinda echoing what a lot of the other people have said, but my main objection is the setback from the feedlot from Lewis', which is south of the railroad track. I think they should have measured from a different point, the half-mile rule. I mean, it says in there that agriculture, you know, and the comprehensive plan is priority, and I think we should have measured further over from the half-mile line, which would have restricted the development, of course, but it would, Mark and Jamie Lewis, they've been there for years, that's their livelihood, and they are getting restrictions on any expansion. You know, if they try to expand further towards the subdivision, that there's gonna be complaints from when the subdivision is put in, because you know darn well, if there was a subdivision there already and someone wanted to put, get a variance to put a feedlot closer than a half-mile, he probably wouldn't get that okay, you know, and, and also, I'd like to echo that 200th Street is a narrow township road, and the extra traffic is really gonna be hard on the houses on 200th Street, and I know we're not talking about gravel, but gravel trucks in that road, just not a good option. Just about all the gravel pits in Clay County are on county roads. I only know of one that's on a township road. I mean, I don't know every, but I know a majority of the gravel pits, so I think, I think the planning commission kinda made a mistake, and were negligent in the measurement from, from Mark and Jamie Lewis. And also, I guess I could echo that I did talk to some real estate people, and they said my property values would probably drop, because I moved there because there was a minimum maintenance road, and we take care of it, and I'm fine with that. But the extra, if we get extra traffic down there, that's probably gonna affect my property values. Any questions, or?
Thank you.
If I might, Mr. Chair, he commented on the half-mile measurement from, from the feedlot. The, the property down here is the Lewis property, and the feedlot permit that is applied to it is applied to the entire property. The actual feedlot does encompass the whole property. So we, we had a couple of, a couple of options. We do our half-mile from this point, which is quite some distance from where they have any animals, which would have taken most of this property out of consideration for any type of residential development. What I did was I worked with Craig Halverson, we took an air photo of the Lewis property, and we delineated where the actual feedlot was, where the animals have been and, and are. And after the planning commission meeting, I got a call from Jamie Lewis, and she said, "Can you send me that? We wanna look at what you delineated." And I sent that to her, which is these lines, and she, her response back to me was, I sat down and where the lines are is where the feedlot is. So we, we took our half-mile setback measurement from these lines as opposed from the property line way up here, which left more area up here for development. But the Lewises concurred with what we had defined as their feedlot, so I, I'm comfortable with that, and, and working with Craig Halverson also.
Can we also clarify, too, there is a creek that goes there, and by MPCA regulations, you can't expand a feedlot on that north piece of the feedlot, any closer to the river. I mean, Jake has...
I'm not exactly sure what...
They had said that there was some significant issues with expanding that any further to the river, because, because of drainage, you can't do that.
Well, drainage and the fact that there's a big terrain difference here, they're kinda up on, on the top of the hill here, and when you get down towards the river, you're going down towards the river. So in, in theory, like I said, the entire property has the feedlot permit addressed, I mean, overlaying on it, because they give it to a parcel, but the actual feedlot that's in operation at this time is defined by those yellow lines.
But that was what the, just for this board, I was at the variance, and I think Commissioner Gross, you were there, too, that's the reason the variance wasn't accepted, because he can't develop any farther so into those, in the lots, because it would have encroached on any future development that Lewis's would have, correct?
And there's, I don't know what the advocates, you know, intents are at this time, but you know, they, well, the last, last photo here was what might have been discussed as the seventy-two or sixty-two or however many lot development in phases in that entire parcel, or those two parcels, so.
But that's before the variance was denied.
Right, there'll be an impact, because with the variance denied, a good number of the lots right in this area at a half-mile won't be able to be developed, so. But there's lots of ways you can configure property.
The, the township has the ability to, to close a road.
They have the ability to close a road, yes.
So, if the township determined that they didn't wanna see the traffic from 12th Avenue South going to the west, right, have I got my directions correct?
Yeah.
The township has the ability to close that off.
They do, but they were the parties who were concerned with putting a cul-de-sac there, because it would, in essence, close off the road.
Well, but that, but that becomes the local jurisdiction, jurisdiction issue, not our issue. But, but I mean, all of these people who would have concern with that could talk to the township, too, about the possibility. You know, I think right now, to the, there's a road that goes just north of the Walmart in, in Dilworth.
Oh, yeah.
And that, that is closed right now, and it's, it's closed because it's poorly maintained, it's a, it's a bad road right now, but the townships took it upon themselves to close that road. You know, so I'm just saying that there's, there's other options for citizens to go to that, to the jurisdiction who controls that.
Yeah.
And then that could force them to use, then that goes with, what this gentleman might not like, but that's, that's the politics of it, I guess, so.
Tim, is this the, the half-mile setback from the feedlot, this yellow line that would I delineate? Approximately. Okay.
Okay, do we have any other comments that we, while the hearing's, okay.
Hello, I'm Rick Weaver, I'm Holly Township Supervisor, and I live on 2896-190th Street South in Holly. And I guess probably the biggest concern is gonna be the road out there. I mean, that's, we've discussed that a lot, and if this goes in, there's gonna be a lot of traffic on 12th Avenue South out to the west, and we're gonna have to maintain that road to the conditions that it's being used. Right now, there's very little traffic on there, so we don't do any maintenance on it, and the residents out there have been happy with that. But if this goes in, we're gonna end up having to rebuild that half-a-mile road, and we'll probably have to rebuild 200th Street South out to Highway 10, because of the amount of traffic that's gonna be on there, and that's gonna put a big burden on, on our road budget to have to rebuild a mile and a half of road because of this housing development. And I guess that's, that's, you know, it hasn't, hasn't officially come before the Holly Township Board yet, we haven't acted on it yet, so I'm speaking on just my opinion on it, we've, we haven't discussed it on the board itself yet, but that's what my opinion is, I guess, and that's about all I got to say, unless you guys have some questions.
I just have a question, Rick. Has that application, has that application been submitted to your board yet?
The various versions of it have been submitted at, at one time or another, but every time, it keeps changing, I guess, we haven't, we haven't specifically had this one that I'm aware of.
Okay. Have you?
Not, not this one. You've, you've changed this one since you submitted that one.
Any questions on the council? All right, actually, Rick, it's not, he's not here representing the township, so. Thank you.
Could I speak?
Sure.
My name is Beverly Henny, and I live on 200th Street South, and I just would like to echo what everyone else has said as far as the amount of volume of traffic on 200th Street. And now I am hearing that we're going to improve this road, and it's going to, not only do I not want this road, I'm gonna have to pay for this road? Please, vote no. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, do we have any other comments? Final call for public comments. Anything from the board while we're in public hearing? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Both saying, motion carried. We have before us a request to approve the final plat.
I, I, Mr. Chair, I won't be voting to approve this, at least at this point, there just seems to be too many issues in terms of the roads and the safety issues, and I don't know that they've all been addressed, at least to my satisfaction, so at least at this point, I wouldn't vote to approve it.
I'll make a, a comment. Like I said, I've been in a considerable amount of meetings on this, and, and after being at a six-hour meeting a month ago on it, I feel this, this is probably the best use of this property. I, I did vote against the gravel pit that we're not going to talk about, because I didn't feel that it, it took into account the problems with the road. I, I, you know, I, I understand that there will be an effect on the amount of traffic that are there, it's a considerable amount less than what a, a gravel pit would be, and, and I think I, I commented at the last meeting that I, as being a resident, if I lived there, would want this as opposed to the, the gravel pit running by my house. I, I just think that, that I, I've talked to Lynn Foss at the Soil and Water Resources, that issue with drainage and wetland issues has, has been significantly discussed. I believe that conversation with the State Highway Department on access of Highway 10 really has been discussed, and, and they feel comfortable with what's being proposed. And, and so while I understand the concern for public safety, I really think that our agencies have been involved with designing the specs to allow for emergency vehicles to go in to this nine-acre, or nine-plot subdivision. You know, we're not talking about the seventy-two, we're not talking about anything. We can only act on what's in front of us right now.
I think we're all, well, several of us offered comments already, before we're making discussions, say, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the subdivision, so that we can bring it up for discussion, we're all discussing it without...
Sure, all right, we can do it either way, but now that there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. I, I, I wanna comment, too, on the, on the traffic issue and the various things that come before our county board. It wasn't too long ago that we had a public hearing on an event center that was on a rural road, where they were gonna, at times, bring in a hundred cars into, into an area for catering and to have, have events, and our, our board approved that. Our board approved it kinda for some of the same reasons that Commissioner Mojo talked about, that we, you know, we do expect when we, when we deal with our, our agencies that handle the traffic issues, when they say that it, it's okay, as long as it's within our jurisdiction, then, then we, we support that. And I, I find it difficult that we would, we would, we would vote to let an event center with a hundred and some cars at a time come in for an event, and, and then not have something for, which I agree, it's the best use of that land if it's going to be used for anything, other, you know, so I, 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 I don't know how, I have some issues with the gravel pit issue, but we can, we can talk about that, what, what the recourse is for that.
Well, my concern is, you know, we say, well, we moved out to this rural area for, because we wanna be out in the rural area. That's not a rural area out there anymore. I mean, if you look just a little quarter of a mile to the west, you got the Bowden Edition. I mean, that's a bigger town out there than you can bring Georgetown in there, you can probably bring Felton in there, you can Comstock. We got a lot of, several cities in Clay County that aren't as big as this area, so to say that this is a rural area, it's not rural area anymore. That little part, I mean, expansion, whether West Fire expands, whether Morehead expands, Yaya expands, and then the rural area, you know, and, so as far as the rural area, I, I, yeah, it's not, that area's not rural anymore to me, you know. You know, as far as the children, watching your children, I live in town, and we gotta watch our children in town, too. There's traffic there. You're required to watch your children. I mean, it's part of our job, is grow, raising children, watch your children, you know, and as far as the feedlot, I don't see the Lewises checked into it, so they're not here, you know, so I don't see a problem there. As far as the road maintenance, it's up to the county and the township to maintain roads. As far as road maintenance, it's up to the county and the township to maintain roads. If there's people living there, we have to maintain the roads for them. That's part of our requirement, so. And last, growth, why shouldn't growth be good for our county?
Well, I, I think that, that point, some of these rural areas, and I experienced it, I, I come from Oakport Township, which was probably the largest residential township in the county and, and as, as far as that goes in Northwest Minnesota, it was considered one of the largest. And we, we had development issues, there was, there's pains that went with it, dealing with, we, we had a gentleman talk about septic issue and, and the need for mound systems in certain areas. But those are technical issues that need to be worked out in the permitting process. But the, you know, going to what, what you said, there's, there's also a lot of children who grew up in rural areas in Clay County and I've spoken to many of them. And the, and that's why a while back, we even changed our ordinances in terms of rural development. Because we had people that grew up in rural areas, they might've had three or four kids, they went off to college, and guess what they wanted to do? They wanted to come back and live in their home county and they wanted to live in a rural setting. And we didn't allow anything for them to do it. So we made some changes to allow people to get back. Granted, is this perfect? No, but can you get a one-and-a-half acre lot in town? No, you can't. So we have to have some room for some of our own kids to be able to come back into this. And that's why I've, I've supported the rural development all along, provided that it meets all the specifications, so that's, that's my spiel on that, I guess. Do we have any other, any other discussion on the motion? Any other discussion? Seeing all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Tim, did you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'd just like to ask, does that motion include the fact that the condition the road has to be brought up to?
Yes, definitely, definitely. Okay, and that-
And that the, the typos taken care of? Yeah?
Do you need clarification on that?
Oh, I-
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll do that vote again. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries four, one. The motion, the plat is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. All right. And you'll, you'll get all of those corrections, Tim, into the, into the, the way the plat is, I think you've got Grant on there now or whatever. Okay, so we'll go back to, Grant, do you want to do your?
Let's see, I, we already talked about the detention issues, we had a meeting about that last week. We had a short diversion meeting on Thursday, it was mainly just to approve some bills and contracts and that type of thing. It was at the groundbreaking and I think Commissioner Mojo already mentioned that, that was excellent, it went very well and was very well attended and the weather cooperated and everything went better than we could have hoped for. Let's see, what else did I have? Oh, we had a construction update meeting yesterday and a lot of our discussion there was regarding the heating system, this is the new jail and the boiler issues that we have and we'll, we're in, kind of in the middle of discussing that right now and we'll be coming forward with the board with some issues on that in the very near future. That was it for me.
Commissioner Gross?
Well, groundbreaking, okay, I was, add that to also. I went to Highland Grove Township meeting last Wednesday night, you know, everything. Good discussion there, good, good information, talked about the jail update and stuff like that, so. Next thing, I had a meeting with Representative Pheasant Forever talking about them buying land and donating to the DNR and stuff like that and how it affects the county and stuff like that and as far as bill payments and stuff like that. So that's something that'll, we'll discuss it in the future and those are my meetings.
All right, thank you. Mr. Henni?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Tuesday, of course, I was at the groundbreaking at the LEC and that was a wonderful ceremony and very happy about that. On Thursday, I attended as an alternate the Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District and this, discussions included the rain garden at first congressional parking lot, we okayed plantings and plantings and matting at the landfill and other locations. And we approved local partners agreement with the Soil and Water Conservation District and Pheasants Forever. And we had a report from Sharon from the NRCS on report on the buffer initiative, attempted to get ahead of the July first deadline. And NRCS is requiring a wall between them and the SWCD, so now they're going to be a remodeling project, they're going to add on to the back of the building and yada, yada. And enlarge the office space, the landlord is offering for reduced price per square foot. And the SWCD board approved moving forward at the rate quoted for ten years. Paul Kravenhoff, chairman and supervisor bought, they're District Four, Soil and Water Conservation District, they bought a new Polaris ATV. Okay, that's it on that. And then on Friday, I attended the Early Childhood Initiative luncheon, we had a working lunch and we heard about foster care. Out of fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-nine children in Clay County, one hundred and forty-five are in foster care, down from two hundred and sixty-two years ago. The discussion about repurposing the Morehead Library as a third pre childcare center or as a drop-in childcare location, provided we build a new library. That's as far as it went.
All right, thank you.
Yep, that's my report.
I also want to comment on the groundbreaking, it was a tremendous turnout, we couldn't have asked for nicer weather. I, and those things, you're always leery of starting to name individuals to thank because the, you end up forgetting somebody, it's, it's almost an impossible task to do, but you know, I, I think we just can't say enough the work that the county staff has done from the, from the time we started the demolition with having our county attorney's office work with the land acquisition issues to our maintenance, our highway department for all they've done and our county administrator for the countless hours that he puts into this. You know, so it's just a thank you again to all of those people that worked on that. Then I, we did have a, as Commissioner Wayland said, we did have a short diversion authority meeting and that was to basically approve some house removal issues in, in Oxbow and, and, and there was a pump station issue that needed to be voted on, so we took care of that to avoid delays. Then we had, yesterday we had, or this, yesterday we had our construction meeting that Commissioner Wayland talked about and, and primary thing that went on there was the discussion about the heating and air conditioning issues from the boiler part. And we found through some late studies, I guess, that there's some inefficiencies within the building itself on, on a pipe, so we've, we authorized them to go ahead and, and start that process. And I think it's going to, it's also going to, Brian will be bringing that to the building committee, capital improvement committee meeting to talk about. And we're, we're going to talk about it in our, we're going to have a jail finance committee meeting too to, so we can do an update to the board on, on all the changes that have transpired since we've got our gross maximum prices on both facilities and, and all of our bids are in and quotes are in, so we'll be able to update you better on where we are with the total project cost to what we had originally planned. And let's see, I think that's, let me just look here real quick. Yes, that's, that's all I have, so. Brian, you want to?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I too attended the groundbreaking and, and you know, Colleen helped a lot with setting that up and the refreshments and things, so you're right, you, you can't start thanking people without leaving somebody out and we didn't leave her out. She said sta, you said staff, but I, I just have to personally thank her to, to keep her working hard at, at doing my job. No, she did, she, she really did a good job on it. We had a, or I met with Highway Solid Waste on, on personnel kind of discussion and we may talk about that at Highway or we may not, I think it's, it's over and done with, so taking care of that. I had a couple of meetings in regards to parking, just, I'll just comment on that. Things, I really have to thank the public and our staff for cooperating with the shuffling that we're doing on parking around here. It's going to get worse before it gets better because we're going to shut down the parking lot in front of the courthouse too and that is redone now this summer months. And you received the information on that, but it, it takes some time to, to try to think where people are going to park and how the traffic flows around here and things like that, so it, it's, it's taking some time. Had a discussion with, the boilers been talked about and just a little bit of history on that, in oh-eight or oh-seven, was it oh-seven or oh-eight and oh-nine? Anyway, around oh-eight, when you first started the, the jail study and the pony study and all those kinds of things, the original thought was to utilize the current steam plant for heating the jail for efficiencies going forward. And that is what was approached into this theory as well. As we've been looking into it, it, it's going to work really well and I think there's really going to be some efficiencies gained. We've, in a preliminary study, we found that, that how our five-hundred horsepower boilers were working was not efficient, they were being restricted by pipe removal. And this is the optimum time to add a two-hundred-and-fifty horse boiler, we haven't done that yet, we haven't asked for your approval on that, but that's what we're doing, studying. And we can probably add that whole jail and still operate for the cost that we were heating the juvenile and, and the, so I'm, maybe I'm being a little too positive here, but, but I think that's really a, really a positive move in the right direction, so we're working in that direction. So we'll let you know certainly what the experts find out and think, so. Attended administrative advisory meeting at the diversion last Friday. I guess you know that things are going on, a lot of the talk was about funding and the new federal budget and we'll know fairly soon on that and, and where that is all going. Nick from Construction Engineers came over and met with me on Friday morning in, in preparation of the, of the construction meeting, so we talked about the change orders. I just want to, I, I've promised to keep you guys abreast on that, the change orders haven't come to you and I shouldn't even say change proposals because they're not change orders yet, but the one that was left bank blank last time was the, the sidewalk lighting and I know Commissioner Gross had a question about that, well, wasn't that designed in the parking lot, the northwest parking lot, that one that takes up that almost entire block? It was, it was planned for and it was talked about and designed, but during the construction meetings, the committee felt that that would be wise to tie that parking lot for lighting and security cameras to the, either the jail or the law enforcement center. So it was removed from the parking lot planning, which Houston Engineering is doing the design for the parking lot. You've got to remember too, and, and I know this is kind of complicated because we started out planning a jail, then we started looking at buying lots, in fact, I remember Commissioner Gross, she made the, the motion to, to buy those, start buying those lots, which was really, really positive. And then we added parking, then we added the law enforcement center, so this has really kind of been a, a, a accumulation of events. So Houston Engineering is designing that parking lot and of course, Construction Engineers and Klein-McCarthy are doing the design for the, to the, the courthouse. We didn't go out there and decide we were going to do all this thing at one time, it's come in stages. So that's kind of the reason why now we're looking at the lighting aspect of it. So it really isn't part of the law enforcement center or the jail, it's kind of stand on its separate, but we're connecting the program with one or the other and, and that's why it's looking at a change order here. I know in talking with the commissioners from the, the construction committee, we need to examine that and feel, see where that financing comes from and where it's best applied. And, and we're working through that, in fact, the chair has scheduled a finance meeting for Thursday morning and what, this will be one of the items that we talked about. So I'll hand you th, this out because the price is like a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for this and I just want to keep you up to the eight hundred, the change orders that are going to be coming before you further down the way. And we, we certainly want you to ask any questions of us that are on the committee for clarifications on any of these points, so. And then we did have a construction meeting yesterday, that's been well covered. And then the only last thing I want to mention is, I think you got the notice yesterday, June sixteenth is the District Four AMC meeting in Fergus Falls again, and that'll start at eight o'clock in the morning, eight fifteen or something like that, so if you want to put that on your calendars or consider your attendance?
What date?
That is June sixteenth, Friday, in Fergus Falls, at the government center there. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report, thank you.
Do we have, do we have any questions on Brian's report? All right.
No, thank you.
Okay, we will be adjourned.